Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I think we will go ahead and start. First of all, good evening. Welcome to the School Board Candidate Question Answer Sessions hosted by the Mohammet and Masway PTOs. We are very excited to have the candidates for Lee and Durham here this evening. Thank you all for your willingness to join us. In addition, we would like to thank all those who submitted questions and are attending tonight. A special thank you to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Student Group from Oyster River High School that also submitted questions. And the hour and a half we have tonight, we'll be asking as many questions of the candidates as time allows. We will start with the questions that were submitted ahead of time. As a reminder, these questions have been submitted by the general public and do not necessarily reflect the views of the PTOs or the Oyster River Quaker School District. These questions have been chosen and edited for clarity, redundancy, and relevance. Due to limited time, questions that were asked in the Teachers Guild and the PTS questionnaires will not be repeated. Clarification questions generated by the responses may be asked. As most questions have all been edited, all questions are functionally anonymous at this time. Now, all questions have been included in the forum. If your question is not asked or answered during this forum, or if you have additional questions, please ask it in either the Zoom or Facebook Live chats. If time allows, we will hold an open session at the end of this evening's forum, and we will ask as many of these questions as we can. Please do not write opinions or thoughts in these chats so that we can better manage the candidate questions. Candidates will be given typically a one-minute to answer and given a 10-second warning. Some candidates may be muted if they exceed the allotted time. For audience members, please keep your cameras and microphones off. Before we begin, we would like to remind you that two candidates on the ballot are no longer running for office and have stated they cannot serve if elected. Kevin Abbott has withdrawn from the Madbury race, and Jeff Fortin has withdrawn from the Durham race. In addition, Mr. Eric Mason informed us earlier today that he is unable to attend tonight's forum. He has not stated that he is withdrawing his candidacy. He is still on the ballot. We'll begin with an opening statement from the candidates, but one thing that I would like to talk to you about first is that with the questions that are being read for the candidates, we will be posting them into the chat to be referred to by the candidates and by the audience, so we do not have to repeat the question. So we'll begin with an opening statement. Mr. Alcocer, you may begin. You have two minutes.
Thanks. So my name is Nick Alcocer. I think that of everyone on this, on the group and in the organization, I'm probably one of the least known people. So first, to the PTOs and the organizations who set this up, I really, really appreciate you guys doing this. I am truly an outsider. What I have seen, though, and I want to say this upfront, is regardless to everyone who is, who is voting and who is watching and who has taken the time to express interest, thank you. I think that you have fantastic candidates. And I would very, very humbly put myself in that group. I think Brian has well-represented the town of Lee. I think he brings great expertise. You are sure to get a winner, I think, with Brian. I think UC has been my favorite to watch online. She asks a lot of the questions that we, people like me, I think, have. She's got a slightly different perspective, I think, and brings all of that. She's absolutely going to do well if elected. So to myself, I wish I had a running clock here. I am absolutely an outsider. My family and I moved to Barrington in 2014, and then to Lee specifically to be part of the Oyster River School District. We, I grew up in Western New York. Like I said, at 18, I moved out, never went back. My wife is a Bills fan. I am not, even this year. But I was active-duty Air Force for about 12 years after graduating from the Air Force Academy, and I'm a pilot by trade, still in the New Hampshire Air National Guard here, but also a civilian pilot. So I want to be honest with you upfront, and I want to get this out there. I think that means I have 10 seconds left. I have a lot of commitments and a lot of things, but my number-one priority is raising a family and taking care of my kids. So a lot more to talk about, and I look forward to your questions. I think I'm out of time.
Mr. Alcocer, Mr. Sisneros, you're up. You have two minutes to introduce yourself.
My name is Brian Sisneros. Been on the school board since 2017. I know it's an odd number, being four years. I was actually appointed by the selectman in Lee due to a resignation on the board at the time, and then I had to run again the next year for a three-year term, which I did, and I won. Actually ran unopposed in that, in that particular election. I have two kids in the district. My daughter's a senior in high school. My son is in sixth grade at the middle school. Both my kids went through the Masway School, started from Pep, where kindergarten, all the way through. My full-time job is I'm a business administrator for the Farmington School District. Not many people always ask me what a business administrator is, and it's kind of a fancy name or an education name for basically Chief Financial Officer of a district. So I oversee all the funds for $16 million budget they have, as well as food service, grants management, budgeting, finance, anything money-related, I handle. I also am an adjunct professor at Great Bay Community College, where I teach finance, business finance, personal finance, corporate finance. And I've also helped them start the risk management program. So that's kind of my background. A lot of people know me. Some people haven't. Nick's probably the last person in town I haven't met yet, but we'll probably be on a much better knowledge of each other after this. So, but that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sisneros. Ms. Terrell, you're up. Two minutes for your introduction, please.
Thank you. My name is UC Terrell. My pronouns are she, her, hers. And thank you all for joining tonight. Similar to Brian, I was appointed to the school board just in October, so I hadn't had a chance to campaign, and you didn't have a chance to get to know me. So I appreciate this opportunity. It's been an intense four months, and to just have a time to, to share a little bit about myself and my perspectives since I've been serving, I appreciate that. My husband and I moved to Durham in 2007 to raise our family. I had graduated from college in civil engineering and worked on Boston's Big Dig project before switching to management consulting. But at the ripe age of 29, I realized if you consider a person having head, heart, and hands, I had been using my head a lot, but I hadn't been using my heart or my hands. And that was a turning point for me professionally, and I now say that I build bridges of a different kind. I worked at citizen schools for nearly a decade, and the bridges there were between schools and communities, between middle-school students in lower-income communities, and volunteers who could engage them in hands-on learning after school. At UNH, where I co-founded the Center for Social Innovation and Finance, the bridges were between people, planet, and profit, bridging business tools with a social or environmental mission. And so this tendency to see situations in terms of systems and structures and build bridges, it informs the questions I ask and how I see ways of pulling different levers for progress. At Oyster River, my kids are proud graduates of the PEP program and Mohammet. This year, my fifth grader attends Oyster River Middle School, and my seventh grader is spending a year at Berwick Academy. While on the board, I've pushed for hybrid models that consider the whole child, including mental health and social, emotional learning needs. I push for informed decision-making, leading to our COVID dashboard and a research project on other districts' practices with concurrent teaching. I believe I'm the first person of color on the school board. One in 15 Oyster River children are Asian-Americans. I've learned a lot.
I'm sorry, Ms. Terrell. We'll be moving on with the other timelet. Okay, so the first question is going to go to Mr. Sisneros. Please give one example of a school board policy that you agree with, would like to update or alter, or would like to propose that is important to you, and please tell us why this is so.
I'd like to propose a policy where we actually go back to doing the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of a school board meeting. That's one thing that I wish we've done. I mean, I, as I've said, I work in another school district where we start every, every day in each school, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance over the intercom, and every student does it. They do it at the school board meetings. They've done it at deliberative sessions. We do it at our deliberative session, but we don't do it in anything else. My wife, like Nick, is an Air Force veteran. I have veterans in my family that I respect greatly, and I respect this country and this flag, and I just wish that we did that. I think that'd be more important. To some people, that's a little, but to a lot of people, that's a lot. And I think it's something we should stand for every time we meet, and that's the policy that I probably would change, given the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sisneros. Ms. Terrell, the same question to you. If you need to review it, the question is in the chat.
I'll share a policy I've been curious about, which would be adding a non-voting teacher representative onto the school board. Currently, teachers speak to administrators or through guild leadership to the superintendent or the negotiating committee. And for us regular school board members who aren't on the negotiating committee, that's two or three degrees of separation from a teacher's classroom experiences, from a representation of what it is to be on the front line with our kids. In considering the different hybrid models earlier this year, I really missed hearing teachers' perspectives and opinions. And I think it was probably both ways, where teachers felt that the complexity of what they were experiencing wasn't fully appreciated by the board. So I'd be interested in the coming months to consider bringing on a non-voting teacher representative.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell. Mr. Alcocer, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
Thanks. Both of those are awesome, and we should definitely work on those. The thing that has always baffled me, and what I would propose, is very similar to what is happening. When I came to the district, we started off with a freshman in high school. She didn't know the area. She didn't know the lay of the land, and I've watched over the last four years. She's a senior now, my oldest. And they, there's still a lot of confusion. So what I'm trying to say is, I'd like to look at the structure of the operation of the school. I don't feel like there is a department head, per se, to standardize teaching across the different biology or sciences. And I've been asked, the reason that I bring this up is, my students, my kids, will get messages from teachers on Saturday night to turn in homework, and they ask me not to reach out to the teacher, and there's no one else to go to but maybe the principal or the superintendent. I think I'm out of time. Structure for the, for the school.
All right, thank you. So the next question is for Ms. Terrell. This is, how do you view the current relationship between the school board, the district, and the community?
Oh goodness, the school board, the district, and the community. You know, we've been through such stormy times, and for those who have, who talk about strict lanes for different roles, I think of swimming and down-swimming lanes when the sea is frothing and there's so much tempest. My, the last four months that I've been on the board has been rocky, as we've all been trying to weather the pandemic together. I think there are strong feelings across all of our stakeholders, but I, after this experience, serving and learning more behind the scenes, I think that we still remain a strong district in our relationships, in the systems that we have for checks and balances and decision-making, and of course, our community members letting their opinions be known and often offering constructive suggestions.
Ms. Terrell, the same question to Mr. Alcocer.
Thanks. So I really didn't have a lot of exposure to the school board prior to the events of the pandemic. And right now, I think our community and our district and our taxpayers and our resource, our students are very divided. I think that's an indication of how things are politically, and it's so important to bring us back together and get refocused. I come from a background where you set forth an objective, and I think our objective should be preparing our students for the future. And I don't care where you are, who you are, who you voted for, what your experience is. I think all of us want to make sure that our students are as well-prepared for the future as they can be, and we should work to come together to bring the experiences of the community to help meet that objective.
Thank you, Mr. Alcocer. Mr. Sisneros, the same question to you. You have one minute.
You know, this last year has been, in my four years on the board, to be the most difficult, and I think it's because this is, this is one of those years where no matter what, somebody is not happy, no matter what decision we make. But I think the bigger problem really with our relationship with the community is, I don't think we did a good job this year communicating. And I think communication is such an important part of any relationship, whether it's country-to-country, husband-to-wife, friend-to-friend, employee-to-employer. We didn't do a very good job of it, and I think I've been pushing to have better communication, and we've actually started a communication committee to improve that. So I think we recognize where our weaknesses were this year, and I believe we are working harder to make that better.
Thank you, Mr. Sisneros. We have a new question. The first, it's good to first go to Mr. Alcocer. There is an annual concern about the impact of the school budget on the local tax burden. What measures or controls do you think the school board can use to minimize or evenly distribute the tax burden? You have one minute.
So this is one where I am going to say that I, I don't think that I'm well-versed in how the tax burden is distributed. We lived only for a moment, well, for a few years, in Barrington, and, and everybody was focused on one thing. And now dividing into the cooperative school district, I still struggle to understand how the three different towns end up with different tax burdens. And I know that this is Brian's area of expertise. So for me to try to speak intelligently on this, I would have to do a lot more work. I really, I think I'm going to have to yield my time on this one, so embarrassingly, that's my answer.
Myself. I apologize. I muted myself. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
Yeah, the, you know, being in a cooperative district, I mean, I work in a single-town district where I determine the tax burden every year to the taxpayers. But here, as a cooperative, the state actually sets the formula. We don't set the formula, and it's based upon half of, and if you ever actually seen the formula, it's highly complex. It's not a simple math formula you can recreate in a spreadsheet without some highly skilled mathematicians. But it does involve the value of the homes in the town that you're in and the amount of kids you're putting into the system. So the more kids you put into the system, the bigger your share. So it's never an even, every year it changes. And just to round it out, you know, Durham eats 50, Lee does about 30, and Madbury does about 20. So when we're trying to work the budget, it's very difficult to do, to evenly spread out it, because it's really out of our control. And it's really not an answer I can give you in a minute, but I'll give you that.
Continuing on what Brian said, Jenna, you know, the board, to my understanding, has kept a pretty steady and predictable increase of about 3% a year, which was incredible considering the middle-school bond and some other large expenses that have come down, and, you know, has tapped the emergency fund in order to try to even out the peaks and valleys that come with these differences in state funding. I encourage folks to read also Al's memo about how the budget was determined and the tax burden in each of the towns, and also to follow the Commission to Study School Funding, which recently made recommendations across the state of New Hampshire to make school funding more equitable for students and for taxpayers. Having the burden for school funding fall nearly entirely on local communities leads to great inequalities across our state, not just in Oyster River in terms of the tax burden.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell. Right, the next question is going to go to Mr. Alcocer. First of all, I will not mute myself again. I learned my lesson. Yes, Mr. Alcocer. There is an annual concern about the impact of the school budget. Oops, I'm sorry. My apologies. I threw myself. I apologize. It messed me up because I had muted myself, and I was trying to make it so there wasn't background noise. Apparently, that was a mistake. So this actual question is a new one. It's going to Mr. Sisneros. There's currently a voucher bill before the New Hampshire Senate, SB 130, that if passed, could impact public education funding across the state. Do you oppose or support SB 130, and can you explain your reasoning? You have one minute.
I vehemently oppose SB 130, and the reason being is, although it's great to have freedom of choice, the money they use to give to other people to put Brent's in their schools elsewhere has to come from somewhere. There's only a finite amount of money out there. So if you're going to use that, use a voucher to send your kids elsewhere, then, you know, that, you're going to take that away from your public school. And when you take it away from your public school, that means our funding goes down. When our funding goes down, guess who has to make up the difference? Taxpayers. We're already paying enough for taxes. This, all this is going to do is actually raise the tax rate for the districts itself. We've already lost funding each year due to less adequacy funding. It's just going to make it worse. And the math that they're using from the Department of Education, I could tell you, as a business administrator, doesn't add up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sisneros. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute, please.
Like Brian, I strongly oppose HB 20 or the, now the state Senate Bill 130. Additionally, often, private schools are not equipped to handle children with the strongest needs. And so the funding, the costs that end up on the public school district are disproportionate as well. Having worked in education reform, I know there are charter schools that are pushing the envelope for, you know, for new ways of preparing students for the 21st century and for college and career readiness. However, the voucher bill and the voucher program is not the way to advance our education system overall.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alcocer, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
So just like I think Brian said, having freedom of choice in how we raise our children and the opportunities that we give them is absolutely important. For us, for my wife and I, we moved, we changed homes to try to put our kids into what we thought was the best school district in the state. I, I think that the people who would support this bill are not, they're just trying to treat the end result. What we need to do is treat the symptom. If we are not happy with our public school, let's fix that instead of giving people the money from the public education system to go off and make other choices. So that's where we should be focused. I don't think that it's a good idea. I think that it's a Band-Aid fix, and we're not truly treating the symptom to improve the education that we can give to our children and throughout the state.
Thank you. Ms. Terrell, a new question to you. What policy or curricular changes do you suggest to make the district anti-racist and more inclusive of diversity, including religious minorities?
I serve on the Superintendent's Equity, Justice, and Anti-Racism Committee, and it has been tremendous to see the teacher and student leaders really pushing our district to consider the stories that we do and do not tell our children and tell ourselves. You know, there's, and there's, we have a lot to overcome as, with systemic racism in all of our institutions. When I'm looking at the question of what policy and curricular changes, I know, for example, the anti-racism policies will, at the board level, will give permission and cover to some of the teachers who are really at the vanguard of rethinking our curriculum. I would never push the curriculum, but to, to allow these teachers to grow. There is also the opportunity to opt out. So in, if you have a religious difference for some of the, you know, the curriculum, you can do so as well.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell. I should have added in the beginning that these questions, including this one and the next two, are from the Oyster River High School Diversity Equity and Inclusion Student Group. So the same question regarding policy and curricular changes is to Mr. Alcocer.
Thanks. So I want to be very methodical in the way that we approach these changes. I want to try to think through these things, but I also think that it's important to bring teachers and students in. Just like you see, you know, and I put this into my biography, I was the child of an immigrant who came to this country. I was the darkest kid in my school, and so you had to meld in. Did that make it right? No. But I want to be very careful about going too far to one extreme or the other. I want children and teachers to present all options. I think that the, this is a very careful and mindful process that needs to be reviewed, and we can't just jump onto the term of the day. And I'm, please don't think that I'm insulting this or putting it down. I just think that we need to be very careful and methodical about how we do these things so that we don't exclude anyone in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Alcocer. The same question to you, Mr. Sisneros.
As Uzi had mentioned, the group that we have, the anti-racism group, is outstanding. Her and Denise Day are on the board, on it, and they're doing an excellent job. But the one policy that we have that it's going to take time to come to fruition that I really support is getting more diversity into our working, into our staff, so it represents our, our population better. We've started that a couple of years ago. It is, it is an uphill climb, because we have to find ways to get people that may not have grown up here to move here. And that's, that's proving to be very difficult, but we really like to see our staff reflect our population here. We have a large Asian population. We have other minority populations that aren't represented well, but I think students will feel a little more comfortable if they had somebody of the same nationality that, that they are, the same background, whether it be religious or not. So that, that's our policy that I, that I really think we can, we can work on and be successful in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Alcocer, a new question to you. How do you plan to address the specific challenges relating to LGBTQ+ individuals in our district? You have one minute.
Thanks. So, and I put this in the, in the response, too. I am, I am truly not well-versed. And for me to Google answers or go out and prepare, the only way for me to try to help give voice is to talk to the people who have lived this. This is not an experience of mine. I have friends. I am supportive of lifestyle choices, of changes, of focusing on letting students become the best version of themselves that they can. So in order to do that, we have to give them all of these opportunities. But for me to stand here and falsely say that I've got some panacea for, for solving the inclusion problem that we have for the LGBT community would be wrong. So I would have to start by getting more information from the students and the teachers and the community members who have lived this.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
I don't know if people know this, but we, the Oyster River School District was the first district in the state of New Hampshire to have an LGBTQ policy. It was actually in the paper. I believe it was on Channel 9. We've been very open and inclusive for a long time, and we make sure that they feel as comfortable as possible. Is it perfect? No, I don't think anybody has a perfect plan that will make them all feel comfortable, but we're working towards it, and we're getting closer every year. I'm also part of the, of the group that designed the middle school, and we actually utilized our policy when designing the middle school. One thing you'll notice when that's finished is we have individual bathrooms in there. There's no more gang-style bathrooms. So there doesn't matter what, how you identify. You can use whatever bathroom you want. Staff is using the same as the students, you know, males, females, but it falls in nicely with our policy.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
It's interesting. Over the past four or five months, the primary focus being the pandemic and the secondary focus being on our anti-racism efforts. Like Nick, I am less aware of the specific challenges in our school district. I do know from my professional work and work with UNH students, when you can show all stakeholders that there are benefits to diversity, whether it's boards making better decisions or New Hampshire businesses being able to attract better employees because of the transgender rights that were passed at the state level a few years ago, continuing to elevate. Continuing to elevate awareness and show the benefits of diversity are, you know, are a strong start, I would think, in any context.
All right, thank you. Next question to Mr. Sisneros. Would you support a policy or procedure promoting pronoun usage in introductions, emails, signatures, et cetera? You have one minute.
I really think it's your own choice whether you want to use that or not. I don't think we should have a policy that requires it. If you want to use it, be my guest. That's fine. I don't, I don't have a view against it for it. If you, I think people should have their own choice. I believe in freedom of choice. If they want to use a pronoun usage in their introductions or email signatures, feel free to do so. If you want to call me, you know, he, that's fine. If you want to call me a, a bad name, I've had that before too. So, but in, in all seriousness, I, you know, as far as promoting it, I just think we all should have freedom of choice whether we want to use pronouns or not. And I don't hold anything against anyone who chooses to use pronouns.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
This is an area I've been learning a lot about, both in the, in the Equity and Equity Racism Committee. And then also in other parts of life. And I understand the power of people who are in the sort of a more dominant group. Putting a hand out to say, this is, you know, this, this is normal. This is, this is understood. We are by all saying that, so we're putting ourselves on the same playing field. I am opening up permission and support for, for different, different identities. I don't know whether it should be, you know, a policy or mandated. It, it doesn't seem like that would be the best way to achieve those goals of sort of awareness and equity. But I think the more we can talk about it and the more role models just display that, the better off we'll be.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell. Mr. Alcois, sir, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
I, I think in this particular case, again, it's new, just like everybody else said, and I think that individuals should have the right to be them, their best self. What I will, would say was, in this particular case, I, I think that, you know, if a school board resolution or an administrative resolution to support it, I absolutely am in favor of that. What I am not in favor of, and I think where we would be trying, what we would be trying to counter by having a strict policy is allowing students or teachers or community members to somehow disrespect those who chose to do something different than what we'll call the normal. And, and that's just unacceptable. To, to try to strip someone of living their best life, however they choose to do that, should not, should not give you power in any way. So I don't think it's necessary. I'm going to get muted, but I, I would be supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Alcois, sir. The next question is the first to Ms. Terrell. The current memorandum of agreement with the Teachers Guild regarding the pandemic runs to the end of the school year. Do you agree with it? You have one minute.
I wasn't on the board and it's very hard to to put yourself in the shoes, I think, of the board members and the administration that were, and the guild members that were coming up with this MOA. So I'm not going to, to, to second guess the creation of the MOA. I do think there are a couple of problematic pieces in it and I'm glad that it will expire at the end of this year. So we have a chance to, to press restart for the fall. Certainly, the, the, the piece that said that teachers could not be required to teach concurrently was interpreted by some as concurrent teaching being taboo to even look into. And I think we've, it, there were a couple of hiccups that we found our way past that to the, the teacher choice model at the high school. I currently support the, the six-foot distancing because there's CDC recommendations. But I know that with vaccinations, we may be open to closer distancing for full reopening in the fall as well.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Alcois, sir.
I wasn't around again. I had to look it up. It took me a while to find, I think, you know, and I wasn't in the position to know what was happening and I don't know what sparked the need for it. What I would say is first, we all send our children and entrust the teachers to do the best job that they can. So do I support the Teachers Guild in protecting themselves and trying to do the best job they can? Absolutely. Just like UC said, there are parts of it that I think were, were well-intentioned and there were other parts that I think we gave a little too much. Protection is not the right word, but a little too much latitude for a little too long. Because this is such a rapidly changing and rapidly evolving pandemic and virus. It is what it is and we're going to work through it, but I think that the vast majority of teachers want to do what's best for students, just like parents.
Thank you. Mr. Sisneros, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
Yep. Well, I was on the board when this memorandum came up and obviously seeing it in another district where I work, I, I was the only one that questioned it and I questioned two specific parts. And those specific parts were what Uzi was mentioning earlier, concurrent learning and the three, and the six-foot distancing. Because I knew at some point that would change as this pandemic tends to wind out, starts to wind down. I was outvoted, so I, I ended up supporting it because the rest of the MOA was actually very good. It was, the intent was to protect the teachers. And the event, either they test positive or they're exposed or what have you, and I don't knock them for that at all. But those were the two issues that, that ended up kind of holding us back to where we, we want to be now. But it is what it is. It's an agreement. We have to stick to it and we have a legal obligation to do that. Although when it expires, I don't foresee it coming back in the fall for the next school year. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it to be extended past where it is now.
Thank you. We have a new question, starting with Mr. Alcois, sir. What is your responsibility when you come onto a board that already has agreements in place?
So this kind of ties into the other question of, you know, can I support something that I don't necessarily agree with? And those agreements, my responsibility is to try to understand them and try to get the background to each and everyone, but I also have a responsibility to question. And that's what I, I bring to this is I'm a, I'm a different person. I, I grew up in different areas. I had my kids, I think, in six or seven different schools. I've seen the different way that things do thing, different schools operate. And so it's my responsibility to question them and I would ask everyone else to do the same, to try to innovate new ways to try to work around and amend and change those policies, update those policies. And, and the ones that work, you know, there's, there's also a lot of credit to the people who have been around and say, we tried this in twenty twelve or whatever and it failed. Let's not go down that road again. Let's be better.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
Well, when you come onto a board and there's already agreements in place, I mean, you're, you are legally obligated to, to follow those agreements. You know, what it ends up coming down to is relationships. And if you have a good relationship with whatever group you have that agreement with, if there's a need that you have, you may have the ability, if you have a good relationship, to sit down and say, hey, we have an issue. Can, can we discuss this? Can we work on this? Because I can tell you from experience that negotiating the contract is actually the easy part. The hard part is following the contract. Most school districts or businesses get in trouble when they violate a collective bargaining agreement and that can get extremely expensive and it can wreck the relationship that you would have. So I would I, first thing I would do is work on relationships and then make sure that we're following it properly. You have to know your collective bargaining agreements inside and out, like I, I do all, every day at work. Every time I have an issue, I refer to it and yeah, you have to follow it, but I also have that relationship where if I do have an issue, I can have a conversation about it.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
As Brian says, there's a legal responsibility to stick with an agreement. However, when you have a collaborative relationship where, you know, in this case, the guild and administration and board would be working together collaboratively towards this, this vision of, of the, the best education for our, our kids. Then, you know, you can, you, you can move past, you can be, move beyond sort of the, the, the legal agreements and the, the structures that you've put in place to protect yourself of at, at one point in time to move to the next point in time. I think to, to Nick's point also, it, it's not just legal agreements, right? It's a whole system of structures and relationships that any new board member is entering into. And the challenge and opportunity is to understand what is there and that is healthy and not blow it up. At the same time that you're asking good questions to be able to evolve and grow.
Thank you. We have a new question, starting with Mr. Sisneros. Last week, the governor issued an executive order that directs each district to meet a minimum number of in-person instructional days. Do you agree with the governor's order? You have one minute.
I don't agree with the fact that this order is kind of a one-size-fits-all. I do agree with the fact that we do have to be in school more. And we were compliant in both the elementary school and the high school. We decided to work on the middle school, which we did last week. And, and this week, we've actually expanded to bring the elementary school, which was already compliant, in more. And the high school on Monday will start with their fifty percent model. I understand what the, what the governor is trying to do and I can foresee down the road, just from speaking to the, because I do meet with the Department of Commission, Commissioner of Education on a regular basis. This is probably the first of a few mandates that are going to be coming. Our next mandate is probably going to be three or four days in. And that's really going to change things. And so I, my goal, as I've said to the board, is we need to be ready for that next mandate. And that's what I want to be pushing for, if I'm chose to be re-elected.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
The governor overstepped his, his role by usurping local control in this executive order. Not because the, the spirit or the intent was incorrect. You know, I've been pushing for more in-school opportunities as well, but because so little came from, from the state for so long. And then with a rapid turnaround, the, the order stepped on what the board had decided in November was the, the optimal model for the middle school. So I supported the appeal. With that said, oh, there's this complicated equation that is different for each family, for each child in terms of their in-school time, their remote time and their asynchronous time. And right now, we're going to be getting more asynchronous time at the same time that we are getting more in-person time. So I've been speaking with a lot of families who have different opinions about how it will affect their children and it's complicated. I'm not sure that, you know, that it was a bad, I, I think that we'll be able to move forward with the two-day model and benefit the district and benefit the children.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alcois, sir, the same question to you, please.
I do agree with the, with the governor's direction. I, I disagree with UC here. I don't think it was an overstep. But I think that what the governor was trying to do is respond to the, the needs of the people and the needs of the children and, and continue to try to get us back to normal. I think, just like everybody else here, that kids need to be in school and we need teachers in front of them. As you mentioned before, part of the, part of the MOA is problematic for that. Again, I want to protect everybody. I want to do what I think is, is best for their health and safety, but we have to be willing to accept some risk. So we need to put children back into school and we need to try to drive and take a little bit more risk than we've been taking before, but driving toward that end goal of putting them into school and planning for that day because it is going to come and the kids need it.
I'm sorry, we're out of time. The next question is to Ms. Terrell. There is a current bill, HB five four four, before the New Hampshire State Legislature that quote, defines and prohibits the dissemination of certain divisive concepts, end quote, in schools. Do you oppose or support this bill?
This bill thickens me, honestly. If you read further, essentially it in the name of looking at each person as an individual who is self-made and is able to create their own path in the world overlooks policies and practices both by our government and by other powerful institutions such as banks and other businesses that make it harder for people of certain races or income levels or identities of various types to have the same opportunities. And if we are not able to teach about redlining or about the Japanese internment camps or other examples of systemic racism, then we will not be able to fully understand our country and live into its potential.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Alcois, sir. You have one minute.
So I want to make sure I'm talking about the right one, that this is essentially boiling down to, to avoiding teaching the differences that people have. And, and to me, it's, it's, we need to get away from whitewashing everything from, from looking in the past and, and saying that things were acceptable at, at a certain point in time. As we grow and we progress and we become more aware of ourselves, I think it's important that everybody understands from where they came. But to, to try to hold people today who act and, and behave in a responsible manner, responsible for the actions of people in the past, it, it's, it's crazy. We need everyone to move forward. We want them to do this together. So I, I don't think that this bill prohibiting this action would be, would be the right thing to do. I thought I got muted. Sorry. I don't.
Thank you. Now you're muted. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sisneros, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
Yeah, the government in general tends to like to micromanage school districts. And what I would like to see them do, if they want to do something that's good for our school districts, instead of bills like this, maybe they require critical thinking to be taught in our schools. So students can make their own decision on what they want to do. It's things like this that really kind of get my goat because you know, you're, you're teaching someone, what you're trying to tell them a certain way to think. And what we're supposed to be teaching our students is how to think on their own, how to make their own issues, know right from wrong. And the way you learn right from wrong is to see what's wrong. And our history is, is ugly. As any country is, their history is ugly. You have to learn about it. My sister raised her kids in Germany and they actually, at their school, they did not teach about the Holocaust, which I thought was terrible. Because they didn't want to admit in Germany that it was, that it was part of their history. That's just an example. That was wrong.
Thank you. So the next question is to Mr. Alcois, sir. How should the school board respond when state regulations conflict with district policy guidelines or stated goals?
Quickly, that's my answer. I, I've been, I have been at the, the tail end of this looking at different national, federal CDC guidelines, New Hampshire DHHS guidelines. And I think that the district policy has been slow to respond. I understand that there's a lot of, there's a lot of debate and there's a lot of work that goes into the background of these things. But you have families and children trying to make decisions and we just, I don't think we're acting fast enough. So to, again, it comes back to managing that risk, to trying to figure out how far we can go without hurting anybody. But I, I see all over and I think we're talking about specifically now the pandemic and we're just not responding fast enough.
Okay. Thank you. The same question to Mr. Sisneros, please. You have one minute.
I mean, we, as a school district and as a school board, actually are lucky enough to I mean, we, as a school district and as a school board, actually are lucky enough to have lobbying groups that work on our behalf. The New Hampshire School Boards Association, the administrators have an association. School business administrators have an association and they're all lobbying groups to go in and lobby against. Things like this, where there's a conflict between what the school needs to do and what the state is requiring us to do. State has a lot of mandates from the Department of Education on schools and how they handle those things they do, how they handle themselves, and sometimes they are in conflict. But we do have a process that we utilize, which is to go up to the state. The one thing about this state is you can go to Concord and you can actually speak to a representative. And you can go to a hearing and you can speak about it. Now they're more virtual now because of COVID. But there are ways of of handling this and the mental health crisis is is occurring and we are pushing back on that. I know I am. And I will continue to do so.
Ms. Terrell, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
There are certain roles that the state plays in ensuring, you know, high-quality education. And the safety and well-being of the employees within a district. And we look to the state for that. And in general, I think Oyster River and and other districts. In should align with those regulations where needed. In certain situations and when the environment is changing so quickly, or you might have extreme leadership. It is important to have those avenues to to push back, as Brian said. I'm thinking of of one of the agenda topics last night was looking at the quarantine. Regulations or recommendations. And when there's, when there's differences in 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 different bodies. I think our board needs to be sure that we are bringing in medical experts and not trying to make the decisions ourselves. And looks to administration's guidance in.
Thank you. Mrs. Sisneros, this new question to you. Several years ago, some parents disagreed with the board's decision not to offer football as a choice using student safety as the primary rationale. Is it appropriate for the school board to overrule parental choice if there are no fiscal, legal, or equal opportunity issues? You have one minute, please.
I don't think the school board should be the parent for the children of the district. I think the parents should be the parents. This actually came about just after I got on the board. Full disclosure, I'm a football coach, so and I played football. I played semi-pro football till I was forty, played in high school and college. And I knew a lot about the game that some people were making assumptions about that were false. I believe that it's a parent's choice to let their children play any sport, not just football, but any sport. And every sport has a risk. If a parent feels that they are willing, they're willing to have put their child in a sport that may have some risk. Let them let them be that. It's not our job as a school board to do that. I don't think we have any right to be a better parent than you can be to your parent, to your own children. And that's why I voted, I was kind of spearheaded the whole movement and voted to get it passed. I actually made the motion to to get this passed when it finally got through.
Thank you. Ms. Terrell, the same question to you. You have a minute, please.
My child's piano teacher talks about the three-legged stool of the teacher and the child and the parent in in making decisions about practice. And I think that holds at the community level, too, where our communities and our schools and the individual child, as they develop into more autonomous beings. And parents each have a a a role in reinforcing and sometimes having productive tension between them. I think that the families should be able to make the choices that they, you know, that they want, that they feel is best for their child. If it doesn't have adverse effects on others in the community. So in football, my understanding is it it would have been possible. I I played rugby and also know the the benefits and the risks of high-contact sports. But when we're looking at COVID vaccinations or curricular or extracurricular choices. It's always about weighing what an individual's choice, what effect that has on the rest of the district. And in many cases, it the 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 choice should prevail.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Alcois, sir.
I think the school board's role should be to set a vision and to set direction for the school to help students. As I said before, become the best version of themselves that they can. For the school board, just like everybody else said, to decide that football was not safe. If we're going to go down that road, then we can come up with a long, long list of things that aren't safe. Soccer, rugby, like UC said. You know, hockey, all these other things, it it just doesn't make sense. The only reason the school board should have voted against football is if they can't afford it. Or if it takes away from from somebody else's opportunity in a significant and hurtful way. We should be trying to give every student every opportunity that they can to explore and learn about themselves. And for some kids, that happens, for my kids, it happens on the athletic field, just like the academic field. We shouldn't be taking that away.
Thank you. A new question, starting with Ms. Terrell. The CDC recommends physical distancing of at least six feet as part of its layered mitigation strategies for reopening. Should the district continue to adhere to the six-foot recommendation?
This is where I need to back up and describe my approach to making this type of determination or recommendation or vote on on the board. Which is to look at the, look to the medical experts. In the fall, there was, the the board hadn't yet heard from epidemiologists or 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 mental health experts. Or or others who could advise us on on our systems and our decisions. And so by bringing in a medical, the the two medical experts, developing the COVID dashboard. Ensuring that Todd Allen is speaking with Dr. Harvey each week on new variants or on vaccine rollout. That's how we make the best decisions as as a board. So my understanding is currently the 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 CDC and others have retained the the six-foot distance. And I will continue to avidly seek external guidance and expertise on making these decisions.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Alcois, sir. You have one minute.
So the you said it exactly in the in the in the question, which is, this is a layered approach. And anybody who, I think, looks at risk management, looks at what what can we put in place to help mitigate the risk that we're going to take? And so if we're going to accept six feet, then what else do we do we do with that? And if if it goes back to getting students in school and getting teachers into classrooms. If I'm going to cut that down to three feet or four feet, what other steps can I take to bolster that? Where can I cover that? Is it with masking? Is it with dual masking? Is it with face shields? Is it, I think, right now, we're trying to grab every opportunity that we have and live by the most conservative protection rules. And we need to be able to to move that along the spectrum with different. Different mitigation strategies to keep those multiple layers, but get as many kids in as we can.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
Well, the question, should the district continue to adhere to the six-foot recommendation? We have to. Remember, any agreement that we have with the with the Teachers Guild requires that, and we can't violate that. And I'm looking to violate that, no matter what my thought process is on. On the distance that we have. The issue I take with the CDC is the CDC is a national organization and they're. They set policy for across the nation, but the problem is there's fifty states and not every state has the same issue. New Hampshire DHHS. Is our is our state CDC, for lack of a better term. And their guidelines are a little bit different, and I think we need to start moving more towards their guidelines. Because New Hampshire's rates are not the same as New York or the same as California. And, you know, we can't take a national policy and kind of pigeonhole it in New Hampshire. So I like to see less, less than six feet so we can get more kids in. But until we get a mandate from the governor that oversupersedes that, which next mandate probably will. We won't be able to go less than six feet until that time.
Thank you. It's a new question to Mr. Alcois, sir. What CDC recommended benchmarks or specific metrics would you rely on to allow students to return to school full-time? You have one minute.
So right now, we're looking at. We have the rules of community spread. We have our our color-coded metrics. We're looking at per hundred thousand. But I think, like we've talked about, that the. Our school and our community is, it it's offset a little bit because of the the density of the college. And the the rules that apply there. I think that specifically to CDC benchmarks, again, I I don't know today. What I think we should be looking at is what actual positivity rate do we have among the students? And the families that are sending them and the teachers. We work really hard to develop these cohorts, to have people spaced out, to have these multiple mitigation strategies. And we are, we're not, we jump way back. It appears to me we jump way back, way too fast with without knowing what the actual test results.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you're out of time. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
You know, it's very difficult to to say what specific metrics or benchmarks, because there's so many. And you have to really look at the whole picture in order to do that, the totality of the circumstances. So, you know, you what, and as Nick alluded to. Unfortunately, our our middle school and high school are smack dab in the middle of UNH. And UNH is now remote because of the amount of positive tests they have. That's why we were able to start Mastway and Moreham at from day one this year, because both Madbury and Lee had low rates, but Durham does not. So, you know, there's a whole list of metrics that are on the the Oyster River website that we utilize. We update it every Monday to show where we fall in the metrics. And we utilize that to really see if how we can push forward and backwards or adjust as we see need, as we need. My goal is to have everybody in by by September, absolutely. And I think that's the goal we need to set, and I think that we can do that with the way the numbers are going now, including the vaccinations.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
Again, I preface this by saying that I look to Dr. Harvey and and others in who developed our dashboard. To continue to ensure that these are the the right metrics that we're we're looking at in terms of community spread. And the seriousness and impact. In terms of hospitalization, the capacity of the community to have testing and contact tracing. And the capacity of our schools to continue to run instruction, to have enough staff in the schools and contact tracing capacity. I think also we will start to look at the the impact of vaccinations. And I saw today that our teachers will, that there's some dates that have been set for our New Hampshire teachers. Such that by by the end of March, many, if not all, should have received the vaccine, as I understand it, in in group two A. Which is great news. And so we'll see that reflected in the the overall community numbers, but especially down at our our school numbers. That will allow us much more latitude in bringing students in full-time in the fall.
Thank you. The next question is to Mr. Sisneros. If changing the current school models for this academic year would require teacher or student reassignments, will you still support that change in the model?
Yes, I would, because we need to get more kids in. And if that requires making some some reassignments. You know, I know it's, this whole year has been non-normal, has not been normal. It has been as far from normal as you can probably be. I will admit that every single employee in the district is working harder than they probably ever worked before. But we have to be dynamic. We have to be fluid. We have to be able to to. Change the paradigm of what we've been doing to get through this year in order to get more kids in. And if that includes reassignments, that may happen. I mean, there are cases where reassignments may not work, especially if it's a, you know, a five oh four or an IEP situation. And I understand that, and that's the exception of the rule. But, you know, we do have to make some changes in order to get more kids in, and that would be part of it.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute, please.
I think it was my first or second meeting when we were started to look at the middle school models. And the question of why hadn't we planned ahead so that teacher assignments at the middle school linked remote teachers to remote students? And in-person teachers to in-person students like the elementary school? So that we'd be able to transition, instead of flip the switch to a a hybrid model. And I use the term rip off the Band-Aid, which startled many people, but it was only six weeks into the school year. And I thought that would have been an appropriate time if there were a model that would allow for. For a greater in-person instruction at that point, it was, we were looking at two days a week. Then the teacher reassignment would be worthwhile. At this point in the school year, it's hard for me to think of a an an improved model. That would depend on teacher reassignment. And I think especially for special education assignments, that becomes really challenging. But I would be, I would be open to seeing models and considering the the different pros and cons.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Alcois, sir.
Again, I think, just like Brian said and UC said, it's, we have to be able to react. And I think one of the the things that's hurting us and slowing us down is the MOA that we have right now. I I would love to see teachers step forward, and I know that they have done so much already. So please don't think that I'm in any way saying anything negative against them. It is a job I could never do. But I would like to see them step forward with new innovative ways. And and think about new things that they can do to take care, because. Parents know their students best and teachers know their students best. And the school board is just there to help shape and give the resources. And the administration should be helping to find those opportunities and think to respond as quickly as we can, to do the best that we can for the students. With what little time we have left.
Thank you. Next question is to Ms. Terrell. When the COVID vaccine becomes available for all, including school-aged children. Will you require vaccination to attend school as is done for other vaccine-preventable diseases? You have one minute.
This is a good question, and I would need to hear from 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 experts on their recommendation as well. Going back to the three-legged stool and the choice of individuals versus the choice of or the the effects on a community. I think it would be a real shame if, due to individual families' choices. Not only did others, there's a risk of others getting sick, but the loss of instruction time, loss of in-person instruction time. If there is spread within the school building would would give me pause in, you know, in allowing. Families that hadn't chosen to have the vaccination to to re-enter the school if there were others vulnerable. However, my sense is it won't be a school board decision, that there may be a state level or or other level of of. Mandate or decision around the vaccination and re-entry relationship.
Thank you. Mr. Alcois, sir, the same question to you, please. You have one minute.
So as someone who has been fortunate enough to be vaccinated. It it doesn't me give me free rein to go out and do anything that I want to do, anywhere I want. I still have to move and operate in a world that knows that there are others around me, including my own children. To whom I can pass this this disease. That includes parents, that includes friends, that includes the guy at Market Basket who gets a little bit too close. And makes me uncomfortable, even though I'm pretty sure that I'm going to be okay. So we all have a responsibility to continue to do the things we can to slow the spread. But it is, I believe, an individual's choice. And I think here what you mean to attend school is to attend school in person. Every child should have that opportunity. And until we can put this behind us. Forcing children, forcing families to do it, it's it's not something we want to do. They should still have every right to the education that they can, but I think enough people will get there that we will be able to cover.
Thank you. Mrs. Sisneros, the same question to you, please.
Yeah, this is similar to the football question earlier, where I I think that this is really the parent's choice. Although still it's a parent's choice, I think parents have to realize there are some consequences to those choices. And if. some consequences to those choices. And if you, you know, and obviously, right now, most school-aged children don't qualify for a vaccine. They haven't, I know they're in the process of testing it on younger kids, but it hasn't been done yet. And generally, mandates like this come from the state. They don't generally come from us. But I do think parents should have a choice. But that choice, again, comes with the fact that your child could come down with COVID, you know, and every person reacts differently. Some people, you never even have a symptom. Other people can end up in the hospital. But I do think it's the parent's choice. But again, I think most parents would make the right choice that, when it's safe, give them a vaccination.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to remind audience members that if you have a question, please type it in the chat, either here on Zoom or on Facebook, and we'll see it and be able to put it at the end of the session. Thank you. Next question is to Ms. Terrell. There has been considerable effort to improve sustainability and reduce the district's carbon footprint. What sustainability initiatives would you endorse?
I'm pausing because there is a, I, I've both worked deeply in areas of sustainability, including serving on the board of a zero-waste nonprofit founded by Oyster River Grout, the Post-Landfill Action Network, and not having deep familiarity with the Oyster River's current sustainability practices. I know that there is an active groups, both within the schools and then in partnership with the towns and with the university, to look at economies of scale and composting, for example, and what each group can do, what, what groups can do together beyond the capacity of anyone to do on their own. So I would, similar to, to other ground-up initiatives, as a board member would, would encourage the students and teachers and related community members to build these initiatives and to support them at the sort of higher system infrastructure level where I could.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Alcoa Ser. You have one minute.
It's so important to, to teach our, our children about the value of, of this exact point. I, I think that they have, we have a sustainability committee. We have students who are working in town to create and innovate, to try to force this out. I think Brian and his team did a fantastic job with, with the way that they developed the middle school plans to try to reduce that carbon footprint, to have renewable energy, to try to find ways for us to, again, create a better future for the children, and to get them to critically think about what they can do individually and as a community, to try to make a small change that hopefully will ripple into something greater, is, is absolutely something that, that we should support. Specific goals that we would have, I'm gonna get muted again. Let's, let's just try to find ways to conserve the, the resources that we do have.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute, please.
As Nick referred to, I was on the design committee for the middle school. And part of that was finding out what the people in the, the taxpayers in the district wanted in the building. Because the building really does reflect, the neighborhood, really reflects the town that it lives in. And they wanted sustainability. We talk about it all the time. We have to do it. And we did it. And part of it was a geothermal system, which the architects were like, there's no way your taxpayers are gonna want that. Well, they did. And what we're able to do, between solar, we've cut our fossil fuels down 85%. And by using solar power and natural gas, what we've actually been able to done is design, is design a net-zero building. We're at 98% right now. We should close the rest, the other 2% before we open, or are at opening. And basically, what that means is we are consuming as much electricity as we are producing. And I'm proud of that. And I think that is sustainability initiatives that we need to continue in this district and, and do it, and start working on that across the district.
Thank you. Next question is to Mr. Alcoa Ser. There's some concern that academic clubs are not properly funded in the district. How do you suggest creating equitable opportunity and access for both sports and academically related student interests? You have one minute.
So I am a person who believes that a well-rounded education includes athletics. And now, I know that the, the athletic department in the school, the, the PE, what used to be PE is now a wellness team. And I think that's a great step forward. But having people work on athletic teams teaches something that, that may or may not be taught in the classroom. The clubs, absolutely supportive. But I think, to some degree, that those should be, I don't want to say self-funded, but the opportunity, as best we can, to minimize the impact there. All kids should have the opportunity to find what suits them. But I would say that, to me and to others, athletics are just as important as music and foreign language in the school. And clubs are something that we can do on a much, much shorter, much smaller budget to allow kids to explore different opportunities.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Sisneros. You have one minute.
As Nick, I agree with Nick, as he said, that clubs and sports makes a well-rounded student. It teaches you how to work together as a group. It teaches you how to reach a common goal, teaches you how to interact with others, both in good and bad situations, high stress, low stress. But there's a difference between sports and clubs. And a lot of the clubs are funded through student activity accounts, which are usually through fundraising and things like that. I know robotics generally gets grants. And I love robotics. I think it's, the kids actually, to watch kids be involved in robotics is fascinating, because it's amazing what kids can do. But there have been fund in the district. And there really hasn't been an issue that I know of where they weren't funded, because people would come to us if they weren't. And we do everything we can to make the most well-rounded student that we can produce here in the district. And we will continue to do so.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
I don't have a lot to add. The opportunity for students to push themselves and to reach excellence and to be with peers, growing together in both collaboration and competition, can be on a field, it can be in mock trials and debates and robotics and other areas. And I would want to know if it were the case that these more academically related, sort of intensive opportunities, not just to drop in, but something where you're giving the same level of, of commitment and excellence, as in sports, if there were more barriers to those competing or performing at the highest levels.
Right. Thank you. The next question is to Mr. Sisneros. What are your, your views regarding the competency-based grading system in the middle and high school?
Thing that, the, the issue with competency-based grading is, again, go back to my communication comment I made earlier, is that we, when it first came out in the middle school, the parents understood it well, because we did a good job communicating it. The problem is, is, as those kids moved through and into the high school, we didn't continue that communication. So the new parents coming in didn't understand it. And everybody, you know, if you don't understand it, you don't want it. It's just a natural reaction for anybody. But competency-based grading serves a purpose, because rather than getting a D or an F in your math test, now with competency-based grading, we have to make sure that you are competent in that area before you can move forward. And basically, instead of saying, well, you're just not good at that, that area, we're just gonna move forward. Now, we're gonna make sure you're good at all the areas. So, there is a purpose to that. There is a need for it. You can have it side-by-side with letter grades, which they do in the high school. And I just think we should, we should communicate it better over the next couple of years, as it becomes a bigger part of our, of our plan.
Thank you. The same question to Ms. Terrell. You have one minute.
The board hasn't discussed it in detail since I've been sitting on the board. So I've been doing the, the, the online research, both our documents and as well as others, and understand the, the intent of lifting up students that would otherwise just get a D or an F on a test and, and, you know, and, and move on. The, the intent to really ensure that they are reaching proficiency in each level. I've, I have questions, and I've heard questions about students who, who work for a letter grade, and the motivation that they would have to go beyond proficient to, to excellent. And I know that there are ways that, you know, in the, in the reporting, that Oyster River is encouraging that. I think in addition to communication, just ensuring that teachers are getting all the professional development that they need to, to understand how to, to keep pushing students who might have been initially motivated by grades, or parents who might have initially been motivated by grades, to, you know, to push themselves to really excel to their potential.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Alcoa Ser. You have one minute.
Two sides to both of these. There's, there's good and bad in both. And, and it's got to be a cooperative effort. A competency-based grade helps students, I think, truly understand. And, you know, I can get an A in Spanish, but that doesn't mean I'm going to Mexico and, and buying a car. To, to be able to understand these things and do these things and feel confident about it. And, and likewise, and it could, this kind of goes back to my structure within the school point, which is, I might have a chemistry teacher who says, give me this, turn in these five things in the rubric, and you're gonna get an A. And another one who says, that'll get you a B, because that's average. And until I'm, until I'm wowed, you don't get an A. And I don't think that's fair to students. But the problem with that is, that's what translates into higher education, which I think is the goal of all of us, is to get our kids to continue and become lifelong learners. And so it's gotta be, it's gotta be hand-in-hand.
Thank you. All right, that was the end of the formal session of questions that originally came from the public that were submitted earlier. We now get to open the floor to questions from the chat box. It's from Zoom and Facebook. I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Hawthorne, who will ask the questions for you.
All right. Thank you. So these are from our Facebook and Zoom chat. And the first question is for everyone. Ms. Terrell, you get to answer it first. It's, we understand that children will not be going back to school. Sorry, we understand children will be going back to school. But in addition to that, what policies would you recommend to put in place that will address the mental health crisis that is occurring with children in the district?
This is something that our family has, has personal experience with. And I deeply empathize with the isolation, depression, more extreme, you know, suicidal ideation. There is, these, these past months have been such a strain on, on children and on families. And I think our educators are aware of this. They are, you know, we had a special education meeting today, that there is a real understanding that, that, that educators will be leaning in to meet the students as they, you know, leaning in to meet the students as they come back in. And I would look to, to their, their recommendations. Some areas that might come into play are using our summer extended school year programming, sort of beyond the academics, but really a, a more whole-child approach to transitioning students back into school, you know, for, for next fall and recovering from some of the trauma of these past months.
Thank you. Mr. Alcoa Ser?
So this is a whole-of-community answer, really. I mean, because all of us have been struggling with this. And it takes a toll on parents, on, on children. In my own household, you know, there's four kids who have all reacted. I got muted. Four kids, four different ways. It's okay. And, and so each one has a different take on how this is going and how that impacts each of us. And my, my wife and I, what we need to do is, is try to help teachers get back. And again, I want to give them all the credit in the world, because they are in this community, in this school, I think they teach from the heart. And that is one of our greatest strengths. They teach out of love, and they treat our children like their own children. But we also have to try to teach kids to be mindful, and then try to look back, find where they were, and, and take that opportunity, like we said we've been doing, to teach them grit and resilience. Let's really focus on that and, and bring that out of them, so that next time we'll do better.
Thank you. Mr. Sisneros?
Anybody who's watched a school board meeting in the last six months has probably heard me over and over saying that my biggest concern is our kids in crisis. And people look at it differently, because they think a kid in crisis is something that maybe they got a sign on them that says, I'm in crisis, and they don't. There's no socioeconomic boundaries. There's no matter if you're, you know, high functioning, low functioning, doesn't matter, you know, where you live. There are kids in crisis. And the way kids in crisis are found, it's not necessarily by their parents, even though parents think they know their, their kids. It's through teachers. Teachers are trained, and they have a sixth sense on when to know when a child is in crisis. And if, I've, I've spoken with DCYF and saying, you know, how they end up getting kids, they're like, we're not, because it used to come through teachers, the ones that are in crisis that need help. And that's the issue that we have now. This is why I think that, that I wanted teachers in the building. This is why I wanted more kids in the building. The more contact a student has with a teacher, the better chance you're gonna find a child that's in crisis and can get help. And that's my goal, is to make sure that our kids are safe.
Thank you. Okay, our next audience question, to you, Mr. Alcoa Ser, first. I would like the candidates to address the fact that the district accelerates children in math and emphasizes those students who are successful in math, but does not emphasize accelerating students whose strength is in the humanities, language arts, social studies, et cetera. In fact, while sixth graders can now take algebra, ninth graders are not allowed to double up on language arts classes regardless of their interests. What do you think candidates think should be done to bring equity and balance in supporting students who are ready for more challenges in those areas and are not able to find them?
I've seen in other schools, and I don't, you know, I don't know what our program here is. I think that we could take advantage of accelerated learning opportunities. I've seen it in other schools. I've seen where students can, can take more. But it, it has to come, like Brian said, on the recommendation of a teacher. Teachers have to see these things and recognize, you know, Nick Alcoa's not great at math, but he's really got a grasp on whatever subject. There are none for me personally. But, you know, should, should a student who is fluent in a particular language just take that? Or should he maybe move on with something else? Or she could, you know, take a, take two instruments? We have to give the opportunity within the limits of our resources. And I think that teachers would recognize those things, and we can find accelerated programs and to challenge students, because without that challenge, they will not grow.
Thank you. Mr. Sisneros?
Yeah, this is an issue that really comes down to curriculum and administrators. And, you know, as a board member, this is not something we would generally handle. We would probably recommend, put two people together that, that have this issue, whoever on the staff or administration would handle this. But, you know, you're getting into the day-to-day operations and, and curriculum, it's not really what the board does. Although, we could recommend, you know, can somebody look into this and report back to us and let us know what they find? And that's probably where we would be. Every time a parent, right, reaches out to me with an issue involving their student, I always put him in touch with the person who is best in a position to handle them and take care of that, that issue, and get them to where they like to be in the best way, most efficient way possible. But this particular situation is not really something that a, a board member would be handling.
Thank you. Ms. Terrell?
I agree with, with, with Brian's observation on the, the role of board members versus the role of administration. I think there are two ways that, that by the questions that we ask, there's an ability to bring something like this into discussions. One is with the, the shifts in the high school classes, and that, that we, that was just, there was an email sent out, and we know that Dr. Morrison, Suzanne, and administrators have been working to sort of tighten up high school options. There, this is an example of where a board member might say, and what implications does it have on? on those who are excelling in the humanities? Where will their options lie? And another approach is around project-based learning. And when you have students that are majoring in a problem, as I say at Stanford, where they're looking at an interdisciplinary issue, then there's the chance to go deep into areas of, of strength, you know, around water quality or affordable housing. You could bring your math and your English as well as other disciplines into that.
Thank you. All right. Next audience question. For you, Mr. Sisneros first. Are you aware that in 2012, Justin Bryan Tucker of the New Hampshire Superior Court enjoined the Oyster River School Board from engaging in conduct that violates the state's right to know law? The harshest penalty allowed and that consequently serving board members now risk contempt of court and jail time if they violate the right to know statute?
I unfortunately am well aware of this. I guarantee that was Dean Rubin who posted this one because I know he knows this like the back of his hand. An old board here from years ago really caused this court order in regarding to right to know. But what's one thing that we are well versed on is right to know. That's why we do everything in public. We're very transparent. Our minutes are available. We video at most meetings. So there's no misunderstanding of what was said or what was done. And that's good in a way too, because, you know, we represent the taxpayers. That's, and there's no reason why taxpayers shouldn't be able to see and question what we do in any way, shape or form. I mean, I remind people all the time, sometimes we tend to lose track of who we work for and we work for the taxpayers. We're here to represent them and the right to know is part of it, and I follow it to a T, and I have no interest in not following it.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell.
I can attest as a new board member that the other board members are very aware of this and along with our attorney advise anyone new to the board to, to follow these strict practices. There's, you know, there's, there's quite a respect for protocol in how we communicate. One challenge that that led to this year was the, the board meetings every two weeks when there was so much change that was necessary, that ecosystem was changing, we needed to react. It, it felt that our structure might not have been the best fit for a pandemic. And so, you know, this is a comment just to say that we, as, as a board uphold this, you know, this enjoyment, even if it makes it a little bit stilted and come into quicker decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Alcois there.
No, I was not aware of the history of the Oyster River School Board and the right to know law. That is my answer, but I will use the rest of my time to talk quickly about ownership and accountability of the processes. I think that you have candidates here tonight and some others who are, are very forthright in their, in their processes. They're very reachable. They're, they're doing a great job and I would, if elected, I would do the same, own those, own those processes and, and do absolutely everything I can to follow the, the rules and regulations and the court orders. But no, I was not aware.
Thank you. All right. Next audience question for Ms. Terrell first. What's the status of the middle school ahead or behind construction and budget? What can be done to assure we come in ahead or on schedule and under budget?
Brian is really the best to answer this, having been involved in the middle school from, from start to finish. We're, we're ahead and doing well, and I see my time to him for the update.
All right, Mr. Sisneros.
Yeah, in fact, I was on a call with this today. We are slightly ahead of schedule. We are on budget. Actually, we're a little ahead of budget as well. We've been managing it well. And what could be done to assure that we come in ahead and schedule under budget? Well, I'm part of the Oversight Committee and I'm part of the Construction Committee as well. So every week I'm in a, a meeting with the construction managers to make sure all the updates are given to me and, and to the superintendent and the principal to make sure that everything that needs to be done is being done. We get an update on the budget each, each week. And I also, the super, the business administrator as well uses a timeline. It's actually in the SOU office that actually says where we are in the process and, you know, as far as funding. So so far, so good. And our plan is working exactly as we expected it to be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alcois there, do you have something to add about staying on budget?
I was really wondering how we're going to handle that. No, I, I think they're doing a great job and the one thing I would say is, you know, this is an example of how we can continue to communicate. I, I will use this time to say that that's something that I think we, as a board and as a district, need to do better to the community because they're, they're footing the bill for, and they're, they're the ones voting for bonds and, and right now I think it's a little cumbersome to work our way through the websites and, and find the information to, to see those things going. So I hope that the, the next board will do a better job of communicating that information to the community.
Thank you. Jana?
Well, that appears to be the end of the audience questions. See anything else has popped up in there? So what we're going to do is we're going to allow each candidate the opportunity for a two-minute closing statement. We're going to go ahead and start with Ms. Terrell. You have two minutes as a closing.
On a personal note, Nick, it's been a real pleasure to, to get to know you and and also Matt Jerky through this process. I think the, the welcoming of new leaders in our community, you know, whether for, for this position or others committees and, and boards as a way to, to, to get involved. I think I really enjoyed your, your responses and your ideas. And, you know, again, this is, this was a chance for, for me to to share a little bit more personally, I think, with a community that didn't have a chance to vote me in the first time. And I hope that over the, the, the past months, the progress that we've made as a, as a board is, is recognized by the, the community. The the un-sticking of where we were in the fall to where we are in the spring towards a return of, of, of kids to school and working with our teachers to ensure that that continues to happen. It is sometimes hard to see and the communication is especially a piece of that. I also strongly supported the Communication Committee with, with parents that will look at district level, communication, school level, and, and down to the teachers to be sure that we're celebrating what we do right, that we're explaining the overarching vision and the, the reason for our decisions as well as having a two-way street for ways that we can improve. So thank you for, for, for coming tonight and thank you for being involved in the district.
Thank you. Mr. Sisneros, this is your two-minute summary.
Well, thank, I would like to thank the PTO for, for putting this on. I know generally this is done in person, but obviously with COVID, this is not possible, although we get more people doing this and we do the in-person ones, which is usually about two or three people. But I do want to thank UC and Nick for, for coming tonight and putting, you know, yourself in that. And UC, I really enjoy working with you. I know we don't agree on everything, but we respectfully can disagree with each other, which is great. And Nick, I really appreciate you putting your hat in the ring because I, as I, this, tonight's the first time I've met you and I, I'm really, I'm glad you came out and I think we could, no matter what happens, I think we could work together to, to reach a common goal in the future. And thank you for your service too, by the way, as my wife is also in the Air Force and I was this close to going to the Naval Academy. So just so you know, but really this, you know, I really enjoy doing what I do, although it doesn't seem like it's fun. I, I do enjoy it and I, and I love this district. I love the people that are in it. I love the education that my children are getting. I think we have some of the best administrators and teachers that the state has to offer, if not the country. And I know it sounds biased, but I work in another district, so I can tell you firsthand that what we have here is great. You know, it's, it's something that we need to continue and that is tough. Getting, you know, getting to the top is hard enough. Staying at the top is actually harder. And I feel like I can, I can continue that in the future and whatever role that may be. And I hope I, I've earned your support over my, over the last few years. My goal is to get as many kids in as safely as possible back to school because I know it's going to be a huge adjustment and I'm very concerned about the mental health of our children. And I really want them to, to have access to the services that, that, that you pay for. And, you know, we pay high taxes for a reason because we have a great school district. And I like to continue the quality of that district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alcois there. Your closing statement, please.
Awesome. Thank you to the PTO for putting this together. Thank you to everybody. Thank you for the kind words. And to the community, you know, when I first put my hat in the ring, I was kind of a, a last minute guy. I've been, with the exception of cheering for my kids on the sideline, I, I stay pretty quiet and keep my head down. I'm the loud dad, though, cheering and starting the Oyster River chants as best I can when the seniors aren't there. But the community's been very respectful. I think it was a little bit of a rocky start for a few people. But those people stuck with it, and I think that that is a testament to the, the community that we have. So let's lead by action, regardless of who is elected. I think that what you are going to be looking for is leadership, for action and for decisiveness and for people to hear you, to give power to the voice of the community. Because at the end of the day, we're all doing this for one purpose, and that is to give to our students every opportunity to find future versions of themselves, to, to be happy in their education, in their school, in the building, to feel supported because happy people are successful people. It's not the other way around. And I think that's what we want to do is, is have kids look back and say that those were some of the best years of their lives and now they are going to pay it forward as lifelong learners and contributing citizens. I think that we can work on a couple of things, and if I'm not your guy, that's okay. But I would love to, to continue to bring my ideas and help. Feel free. Again, if I'm not your guy, if I am, that's awesome. I'll, I'll push from the front. If not, I would love to continue to, to stay engaged. And that also goes for, I, I don't know. You know, we have people from Barrington. I moved from Barrington and those people need a voice too. They send their students here and they want to have a voice and they want to have a say because I believe that the Oyster River School District can be the best out there. Last thing I want to say before I get muted is please do not in any way misinterpret my words. I can do a lot of things in this world, but be a school teacher is not one of them because I think that that is next to being a mom is probably one of the hardest things in the world. So I give you all the credit in the world and to those teachers who have worked themselves physically and mentally sick. We're all out here and, and this is probably my one chance to say thank you to all of you for doing what you do and, and coming together. So let's continue to move forward.
Thank you. And this will end the forum for this evening. We would like to thank the candidates for their willingness to be here and answer questions tonight. We'd also like to thank all those who submitted questions. Let's have a special thank you to Alexander Taylor from the School District's IT Office for streaming this forum to the District's YouTube channel and to the cable station. We'd also like to encourage everyone to read the PTOs and the Teachers Guild questionnaires, the candidates' bios, and to visit the candidates' websites for more information. Thank you, and everybody have a good night and stay safe.